All right, well, why don't we go ahead and open up the workshop. Stand allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
It is confirmed Oregon Water Resources will not be here, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Second thing, we, time constraints with Brant Media, we'd like to have them go first. Subject to the board's approval, Mr. Chair, and then Cesar Cohen has two reports that will immediately follow that.
Okay, so we're gonna move Brant Media up to department reports in front of that, then?
They're up first.
Okay. Any other amendments?
I have done. Okay.
J.J., can we do a roll call, please? Yeah, we have to get used to doing that at the start of every meeting, to do an initial roll call so that everyone knows who's here.
Commissioner Gold.
Here.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Here.
Chair Pash.
Here.
Legal Counsel Huddle. Director of County Operations, Schmelzer. And moi, John Jesuit.
All right, so no other amendments to the agenda, can I get a motion, please?
I approve the agenda as amended.
I have a second.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Call for the roll.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Whenever you're ready, now?
Yes.
Just an update in the US statistics on police lost. We, since our last meeting, Mr. Chair, we've lost three additional, we're at 21 right now. And so, just a moment of silence, last year, the total number of police deaths in the line of duty was 150. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and if I may, sad day for Oregon, we lost our Secretary of State, Dennis Richardson, yesterday. I'd like to just take the liberty to read something regarding his life. Deputy Secretary of State Dennis Richardson, courageous battle with cancer came to a close. Dennis passed away at his home, surrounded by family and friends. From his service in Vietnam as a combat helicopter pilot to his 30-year legal career in 19 years in public service, this father of nine and grandfather of 31, found great joy in serving and taking care of others. Dennis Richardson loved his country, fought for his country, served his country, sacrificed for his country, and ultimately died for his country. A great, great man and human being, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Nine kids, anybody can get through that, can sure, can sure get a lot done in life, wow.
And he did.
All right, well, if we can go ahead and start, then we'll have Nick from Brant Media come up. Oh, there he is, okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Pash, Commissioners, thanks for having us. I'll be joining you virtually today from not-so-sunny Roseville, California.
Man, or up?
Turn the volume down.
Yeah, we need to interrupt for a second, please, hang on, Mr. Brant, one sec, we're just gonna turn the volume down a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, there we go.
As you recall, Nick, we have to turn it up for the benefit of Commissioner Gold on the phone because you're a little bit louder.
Okay, so, is that better now, everyone?
That's good.
Very good.
Thanks so much. Today, we're not gonna take up too much of your time, we just have a few questions for you, really to get some direction. We normally do this at the start of every year to get a little bit of direction, especially since you've approved a production budget and so on and so forth. All of your normal contract stuff is in place, it's just that we need a little direction from you regarding scheduling and prioritization of production and so on and so forth. So, more than a report, this is more to ask questions about direction, you may or may not be able to give that direction today, but at least we can put these questions out there. All of the, everything we're talking about today has to do with the Curry County Civic Channel, and that's really what we're gonna focus on today. Charles, if you wanna go ahead and change the slide for me. So, the first topic we'd like to cover just real quick is the Curry County, the video master calendar. This was intently agreed to back in January, but we've seen a few changes to the calendar that gave us a few questions that we'd just like to ask the board. If Charles changes the slide, the next thing we have there is a sample of what the calendar looks like when it's laid out in Google Calendar. There's a couple of things that concern us and we wanna ask questions about. I'll pick an example, I'll pick an example, a date. So, if we look at the meetings coming up on March 27th, there's a workshop to be done that's currently slated for the Blue Room, and then right after that is a general meeting that's offsite, I believe in Port Orford, maybe? Is that correct, Charles?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
If the workshops, traditionally in the contract for the last two years, we have been covering the workshops as a part of the contract. If that's no longer required, then that's fine, then we just need a full direction on that. But the other thing is, the general meeting there on the 27th is also offsite. We would like the opportunity to propose a production budget to be able to cover those offsite meetings as a live meeting. If you don't cover those general meetings that are offsite, that'll essentially be general meetings that aren't available live to the public when other general meetings are. If you choose to have us to record and broadcast live both the workshop and the general meeting on days like the 27th, for us, that's a technically impossibility. There's no way we could do a workshop as well as do the general meeting offsite within that amount of time. We would need a minimum lead time on an offsite meeting of three hours in order to get that set up. We'd have to bring your field equipment out to the site and set that up, and then get it ready to go live at the 5 o'clock meeting. Our guess is that the general meeting is more important to you folks than maybe the workshop for video recording, but that would be covered at the production rate, and we can give you an estimate of what that would cost. So, Charles, just for, we can come back to this page, but just for a second, go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So, the question for the board, and we'd like to just open this up real quick for discussion if we could, so I can, so we can hear. Would the board like to cover all the workshops? If so, those workshops will need to take place in the hearing room short of significant expenditures to upgrade the capacity of the Blue Room. As you all know, there was some work done in the Blue Room when this system was first put in about two years ago. The thing is, that was originally built for people like FEMA and so forth to come in and do presentations, and for us to video record those presentations, so a single speaker, two speakers, being recorded on a single camera. We don't have the capacity in the Blue Room to video record the entire board and presentations at the same time. So, if the board's desire is to cover those workshops, we would request that those workshops be moved in location to the hearing room. I guess I can pause here for feedback, if that's okay.
Well, I'd like to let Ms. Schmelzer handle this part of it, but from my opinion, if we don't need live video, I mean, our voices are pretty clear, so if we don't need live video streaming, we could do an audio stream or do an audio recording that is later put on the internet so everyone can hear the workshop or the meeting, that's fine with me.
Right, when the board had discussed it earlier...
How was that, pretty good?
When the board discussed it earlier, they had decided that they did want the workshops to be held in the Blue Room, if at all possible. They felt it was a better atmosphere to be able to sit facing each other instead of in a row in front of people, and then also to be able to sit around a table, so they had wanted the Blue Room for the workshops. I had let Brant Media know, too, that we were okay with not videotaping the workshops, and we would do audio only, because we did realize it was something extra that we had not agreed to in their contract before. So, of course, the board is the final say on that, but at the current time, we don't have it budgeted to add in extra things, so we really were trying to be conservative and do what the board requests by having the meetings while not taxing the contract that we have.
So, the two quick things to point out from a technical standpoint in terms of the Blue Room is, the previous board had us bring some of the microphones up here for Budget Committee meetings to take place here. They are permanently installed here. We just double-checked with your Facilities Director, Eric, you have a total of three microphones in the Blue Room. So, three Commissioners, two to three primary county staff presence, plus presenters. Doing the quick math on the top of my head, that's seven or eight folks and three microphones. That's a bit difficult to get a good audio recording of, just on the face of it. Plus, as far as posting audio of your workshops, the workshop that took place, that I was in town for, but we were called off on, I believe it was January 28th, the audio recording of that has yet to be posted. John Jesuit related to me that there's some technical issues with the website not supporting audio file embedded links. We offered our assistance to embed that in a simple slate graphic video format, so it can be basically part of your archive, shown on the channel, shown on your Curry Civic YouTube channel along with the rest of your meeting collection. The board can direct us to do that at a very minimal cost, if you like, but otherwise, that audio file still is sort of floating in the ether, it still isn't actually available to the public.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That just got clarified for me, the Blue Room having the capacity, somewhere along the line, last couple of years, I heard that we did have that range down there to move our meetings back and forth. That helps a lot, I'm not suggesting we spend additional funds, but I'm, this is real helpful, but I'm anxious to go whatever...
Why don't we, at this point, then, let's just go ahead and stay in this room? If it's gonna be additional funds right now, and there's gonna be a lot of things, why don't we just go ahead and make it easy at this point while we're still getting things up and running here, and let's just leave workshops in this room here?
Thank you, Commissioners, and I will point out the room...
That's my opinion, we still have to vote on that.
Yeah, and Commissioner Gold is on the phone as well. One thing I'll also point out is that the service Commissioner Boyce was referred to, when you have a spillover crowd, if there were twice as, three times many people as there are today, to have a spillover room for additional meeting onsite capacity, that requires no additional funding, we're turnkey ready to go with that, so that would be unaffected by...
And you added the hallway speakers that took some of the pressure off as well.
That's correct.
So, we've only needed that room down there in addition to this room, one other, one previous time, I believe.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so Nick?
Yes.
So, does that clarify everything? We're gonna need to make a, we're gonna need to handle this in a future meeting, then, right?
Correct, we don't, the board doesn't make decisions in a workshop, we save those for the general meeting, but what we can do is put a revised schedule on our consent calendar and address it at that point.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
And Commissioner Gold, did you catch all that?
You still there, Commissioner Gold?
Commissioner Gold? Yes, I am, I concur with having the meetings up in the Blue, or in the Commissioners' place where you have them now. I don't think we should move them to the Blue Room because of expense, so, I concur with what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gold.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you so much, I've just moved to the next item then, real quick, and we'll try to burn through these real fast. I think you already answered one of my questions, so we'll go to this one. Would the board like to cover the general meetings in the remote locations? The reason why we're asking this question is because those general meetings that are going to be held in remote locations are general, and so they are a part of our contract, but because they're in a remote location, they require use of your production budget, not of your meeting budget, and we would need extra time to set those up. So, the current schedule where the workshop that you've just, that you've just intently asked us to do, and the general meeting that's offsite, would, they would basically, it's a technically impossibility. We cannot do an offsite meeting and a workshop within three hours of each other. It's also worth pointing out that if you have a workshop in the annex, and then you all have to go over to, you know, Brookings, that's a 35-minute drive anyway, so...
By an hour now.
More than an hour now because of the freeway that just happened. So, our first question is, because these are general meetings, do you want us to use the production budget to film those and bring them live? You have all the equipment for that, so there's no additional expenditure. It would just come out of your production budget, which you already agreed to. And secondly, if that's the case, can we get a revised schedule on workshops that makes it easier for us, that it makes it possible for us to actually set those up?
Ms. Schmelzer?
So, some of the Commissioners have spoken with me about the night meetings and the issue with the roads right now, so what we were thinking would be that we would just delay evening meetings until we know all the road issues have been resolved. So, that takes us probably into April or May. I think we have to look at it, you know, it depends whether the board wants them to be taped or not, and what the additional expenses are. I think, you know, having them taped is a great idea, I think, but we don't want to also run short where, come the end of the contract, we're out of money and we can't tape the last five meetings.
So, can we look to you to get a different price for the different production costs, what it would be?
So, it's actually in... Yeah, it's in your contract now, Mr. Chairman, that the meeting cost is for onsite meetings where you have your equipment capitalized and onsite. Your separate production budget of $5,000, which hasn't been touched thus far this year at all, would, unless those meetings were longer than five hours, each and every one of them, would easily cover all those remote meetings, and now that Director Schmelzer just said probably one or two meetings are getting lopped off the agenda due to the road issue, then you're well, you're well within your production budget.
Well, what I'm wondering is, if I can do without...
I can give you exact numbers, Commissioner, if you like.
Okay.
So, the production would, production in the field for that would require two hours setup time plus one hour breakdown time for the field equipment. So, imagine that you have a three-hour meeting, during that evening meeting, it goes from 5 to 8, then we add the setup time on that, six hours total at $75 an hour. It's a total cost for a three-hour meeting of $450. That means that in your current production budget, you could have 10 of those meetings and still be well within your production budget.
So, basically, we're looking at $225 to offer our citizens a meeting in their local venue?
Yeah.
That's the difference.
I would just like, I'd like to point out that that includes streaming it back to the channel and the internet, so that even people that are not in their local, like, in that locality are also getting it.
Okay, would you put that, get something in writing for us for the next meeting, the BOC, next BOC meeting?
Yes, sir.
And I'd also like to look at the difference of the workshops, like you discussed.
The workshops come within your meeting budget, so we treat the workshops, it's the same as a general meeting. If it's happening in this room, it's at that normal rate.
Okay.
And there's no setup or breakdown time.
All right.
We also discussed if we don't get a good attendance in Brookings or Port Orford, discontinuing having the meetings in those locations. So, we do need to just see how it works, but it may be that by the end of the year, we're not even gonna be using those remote locations.
Okay, so why don't we do this, because it is a test period, let's, for argument's sake, let's, for the next meeting, let's say that we're going to suspend the evening meetings until May, till the May, what would that be, the 20...
22nd.
22nd? And then from there, if we did, say, you know, a meeting every month, one would be here at night, one would be in Brookings, one would be in Port Orford, for the remainder of the year, what the fees for that would be, and we get something like that in writing, I'd appreciate it.
Copy that.
Understood, thank you very much.
Can I request one other thing? This is Commissioner Gold.
Commissioner Gold, go ahead.
When we're coming up with costs, and I don't think this would be up to Brant Media, but I would like to see total costs that would be, you know, with extra staff time, that sort of thing, for the night meetings before we, you know, make the final decision. So, I would appreciate that, and that probably would fall into Julie's lap, to do that.
That is correct.
Are you good with that, Julie?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you, it'll get done.
Okay, thank you.
Charles, go ahead and move forward, please, on the slides.
So, we covered that slide, so on our production schedule and topics?
Yeah, so, this will be real quick, based on the idea that you all need to make some decisions anyway now. But if we move to the next slide, please, we have a couple of questions about what custom Curry Civic informational videos would you all like to see? This is how we expend that $5,000 production budget that we were just talking about using for the remote meetings. So, you may not be able to give us too much direction on this at this point, but here are some that we've been told are, people have expressed interest in Curry County updates that are two- to five-minute short informational pieces that are ideal for social media, talking about what's going on in the county. I know some Commissioners have asked us to make informational pieces about the transient lodging tax, to sort of purely informational about what it would and wouldn't do, and things like that. A couple of other things that citizens have asked us about, Commissioner profiles, staff profiles, remote meeting coverage would fall under that $5,000 production budget for the whole year. So, the question we have for you all is, what other topics might you like to see in that? We don't need to hear that answer today, especially if you all need to make decisions about the remote meeting coverage. So, I can move on from that if there's no other questions.
Any questions? All right, you can go ahead and move on, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Charles. So, this'll also go really fast, because we basically, you basically told me what you're doing with the Blue Room, so, Charles, just moving on. We mocked up a cost to get the Blue Room up to standards for you to broadcast from it, and it ended up being about $10,720, that would be PEG funds, not general operational dollars. So, it'd be stuff you have to spend on that anyway, but I think, I think I heard the will of the board there saying that the expenditure is not necessary at this time, so we'll just go ahead and move forward from that. I just want you to have a look at it, if you need it to. And the last thing that we wanted to talk about is the transmission transition. Wait, when I wrote that, it sounded a lot better than it was than it actually came out. Basically, at our last contract renewal, we talked about things that will have to happen with the charter franchise this year in order for the channel to continue. Basically, the franchise requires that, the new franchise will require that there's upgraded transmission equipment for, to run the channel. That equipment has been budgeted for, including the additional community bulletin board that's below there. Our question regarding the transmission transition, and this might be a little bit of a question for Administrator Schmelzer or possibly Counsel Huddle, is when would you like that transition to start? We're trying to plan our capital improvement calendar this year, and we'd love to know when you'd like that transition to start.
And I'd like to interrupt that with, I really wanna look more into the channel, these two channels? Is that, we're talking about both these channels or just the one?
The digital transmission, which would require upgrade of Charter to upgrade primary analog transmitter, which could basically fail at any day, just like the towers. That would enable you to have two channels, you still have to push the button with Charter to light up the second channel, and until your board makes that decision, there is no second channel.
Counsel?
Can you extend a little bit more, Commissioner Pash, on what you need to see from the channel?
Well, I just, I just wanna look into the channel a little bit more and the, you know, how it's been set up. I'm unfortunately a little bit behind the ball on this one, and I just wanna make sure that I'm up to speed on the channel, what its programming is, what its intents are, what the funding for it is, those kind of things, before I say something and stick my foot in my mouth.
Okay, we'd love to meet with you individually, if necessary, to sort of go over, especially things about programming and how it's set up, I can do technical as well as content-based discussions about it.
Perfect, thank you, Counsel Huddle?
Thank you, so, if I'm following this, the question from Brant Media is, when do we want to do the transmission equipment upgrade? I would, you know, I don't see any reason to delay doing that, so it just seems like that could be decided at an administrative level, offline, to say, you know, when's good for you. If it's just a scheduling question, I think it's just between you and administration. I don't see a reason to delay the upgrade, whether we have one channel or two. I don't, I don't see the relationship between whether it's one or two channels' content versus the need for the upgrade.
The, not the stumbling block, but the authorization we were waiting for was the budget that the board approved, I believe it was in December, to authorize expenditure of said amount of PEG funds, those are segregated funds just for this purpose, and they can't be used for other purposes. And that was approved for these two items. So, simply, we were just looking for the board to tell us. Do you want us to go ahead and get this going, and we'll schedule a time?
What I understand from John now is that essentially it's up to us, and John, I just, one specific question is, is there any constraints from the new franchise that takes effect this, I think it's this year, that about when we have to do that?
I don't think there's anything stopping us from getting started anytime.
Essentially, it's on us to schedule an installation window with Charter, because literally, they'll wanna schedule that weeks in advance, because they have a very tight technical window. It'll be a wonderful excursion at about 5:00 in the morning, which is usually when they want their installation windows to take place, because your channel will go temporarily down when we're taking out and putting in the transmission equipment. So, that'll be a fun early morning excursion for us, hopefully the roads will be working by then.
Okay, thank you so much, I think I have the direction I need, I'll go ahead and work with Charter to schedule the installation windows, and I won't bring it back to board or anything, but I'll definitely keep staff and administration in the loop on when those are.
All right.
Thank you, I think, and that's the end of, that's the end of our presentation, honestly, unless there's other questions for us, and as I said before, we're more than happy to meet with any Commissioners individually or as a group about, you know, what's going on with the channel, content, and all of that, so...
Thank you, good job, Nick.
Thank you.
All right.
Goodbye, Nick.
Goodbye, Nick. One moment, folks. And I believe this was your next presentation.
Could you bring up the county's webpage first, Charles?
Oh, yes, sir.
I'm not next. Hey, I'm next.
I just want to see if you'd turn around and walk away.
I would've.
Or throw something at me one, right?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Gold, you're not here to be able to see it, but, uh, Commissioner's hearing room is veritably packed with people excited to hear the Assessor's quarterly report.
I couldn't say anything on that one, Jim.
Uh, so, I think this is the first one of your department's quarterly reports, and, and so I'm not sure just exactly how you wanted this to go. Can I give you some information first, before we get to, what you see up on the screen is, uh, first page of the Curry County Tax Rate Summary, but I've got some information to give you before this, before we get to that. This time of year, the Assessor's Office, the appraisal staff is out working on new construction. We actually begin the new construction process in December of the year because we're attempting to, to value properties as they exist on the assessment date in any year, which is, which is January first of the calendar year. That's the assessment date for when people will receive their tax bills on their property. Um, at, so at this time of year, the appraisers are out picking up, uh, properties that are both have new building permits or maybe had an older building permit where they just hadn't finished the project before, uh, before last January first. Uh, last year, appraisers visited about eleven hundred and fifty properties flagged for new construction. Um, the new construction, the real market value total of the new construction we picked up in two thousand eighteen, for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, was thirty-three million, and the assessed value for that thirty-three million was twenty-two and a half million. Um, at the county's tax rate of almost sixty cents per thousand, that new assessed value we picked up just in new construction, uh, would have raised about thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for the county. So, the point being there, with the county's fairly low tax rate, it takes an awful lot of new construction before it raises very much money for, for county government itself. Um, at the county's average consolidated tax rate, and I'll show you a consolidated tax rate. If I could get this to work as well as I'd like it to. Okay, this, this is the city of Port Orford here, this code area two-one, and it's got, for everybody that lives in the cit, within the city boundary of Port Orford, they pay into these taxing districts, and so their consolidated tax rate is twelve dollars and sixty-one cents per thousand. Um, the county's average consolidated tax rate is about eight dollars and eighty-two cents per thousand. So, the twenty-two and a half million in new construction assessed value we picked up last year, on the average, is going to pick up about two hundred thousand dollars for all of the taxing districts in Curry County. Um, so that, that's what we picked up this last year. Um, also, as a side note, in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, appraisers picked up about two point seven million dollars of assessed value on, on properties, uh, where there was new construction without building permits. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. Um, other programs that we're, we're, we're working with this time of the year, um, now's the time of the year that we send out, uh, and, and receive back confidential business personal property reports. If, uh, you own a business in the county, any of the tools and equipment that you use in, in conducting your business, all of that, um, equipment or furniture or whatever is taxable. In, uh, in eighteen nineteen, there were about nine hundred and fifty active personal, business personal property accounts. Uh, total value of, of that role was about thirty-five million dollars. As I said, we've sent out reports to the business personal property folks that we know of. And the deadline for them to file those reports back with us is March fifteenth. This is the, also, the time of year that we're attempting to reach, uh, veterans with disabilities as they may qualify for a veteran's exemption from property tax on up to twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars of the assessed value of their owner-occupied residence. Uh, surviving spouses of veterans also qualify for, for that exemption. Um, there are approximately five hundred veterans or surviving, uh, spouses who qualify for that exemption in Curry County. So, if a veteran has a hundred thousand dollar home, we exempt twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars off of that value, and so they're only going to pay taxes on then seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars.
And these are disabled veterans, right?
Disabled veterans, that's correct. Uh, for the widows to qualify, it's any widow, it wouldn't have had to have been, uh, a disabled veteran.
And are there, aren't there three different exemptions depending on how much disabled they are?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
I didn't want to bring all that information to-
No, that's fine.
But, good for you for knowing about that, thank you. Um, the deadline to file for these exemptions, uh, year after year, the veterans that we're aware of, they don't have to refile, but new veterans that come into the county, and, and I, I must say, our, our Veteran Services Officer, Tony Voughty, does a very good job getting, helping veterans get signed up for this, and we really appreciate the efforts that he puts out. Um, but the deadline to file for that exemption is April first. There's also a property tax deferral program that we're working this time of the year that is avail, available for seniors and disabled citi, citizens on owner-occupied residences. Um, in this program, the state pays the property tax for those who qualify, but the tax must be paid back to the state with interest if the owner, um, sells the property or moves from the property. It has to be an owner-occupied residence. Um, in, in this, there are age, income, and property value limitations to qualify for this program, um, or for this deferral. There's approximately thirty Curry County homeowners that take advantage of this program, and the deadline to file for this program is April fifteenth. Please feel free to ask questions any, anytime something occurs to you. Um, tax collections, I, I've got a copy of our, our tax col, uh, tax rate summary up here, and, and I thought I'd go through some of that, but, um, this is the first page of, of the Curry County Tax Rate Summary. It shows all of the taxing districts, their, their tax rates in the second column, the real market value for those districts. Um, so the real market value of the entire county is three billion eight hundred and seventy-two million and change. Uh, the assessed value, the taxable value, is three billion and, and forty-eight million and change. And then, as, as you can see over here, the tax imposed for Curry County, for Curry County's por, portion of the total tax collected, is one point eight million dollars. Uh, that's what we'd collect on that three billion dollars at our tax rate of almost sixty cents per thousand. But you can see, in Curry County, we have quite a few different districts. Uh, the total taxes levied in Curry County is, for eighteen nineteen, was twenty, just over twenty-eight million dollars. Um, so by November fifteenth, which is the first trimester payment deadline, uh, we had collected almost sixty-seven percent of that twenty-eight million dollars, eighteen point seven million dollars. Um, that's our busiest time of the year. In fact, the last two days before the deadline, we had about three million dollars in payments walk through the door. Uh, by February fifteenth, the second trimester payment deadline, uh, we had collected up to eighty-nine percent of the total taxes, uh, twenty-four point nine million. So, you, you can see that in Curry County, people pay up pretty quickly. Uh, by May fifteenth, we're expecting to have collected at least ninety-three percent of the total tax that's out there. Of this amount, this twenty-eight million, part of it we'll never collect, because people, if you pay your taxes in total, by November fifteenth, you get a three percent discount. So, that's just money we won't collect. Uh, also, the, the other thing that limits the amount that we collect in the first year is, is there's people out there that don't get their taxes paid in the first year. So, that's why, uh, we figure that mo, in most years, we're going to collect about ninety-three percent of the taxes levied in that year.
One second, I-
I have a question, um, Jim. So, did I understand this correctly, that not quite two million is what goes into the county?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-six million goes to the districts?
Correct.
Do we charge the districts to collect that fee, or that tax?
We don't, um, because we're obligated by Oregon law to collect it. Um, but, and I've got some information on that coming up here at the end of this.
Okay.
If you let me go that long, so.
Okay. We have until four.
Okay. Um, I did want to mention with regards to tax collection that we've got an agreement with Jackson County where they will, they are receiving our by-mail tax payments. People can put a check in the mail to, to Curry County. Those checks actually go through Jackson County, and they actually process and post those payments for us, um, at, at a fairly minimal charge. I, I don't know the exact dollar amount. I'll tell you at budget time, uh, but I think it's in the neighborhood of less than, um, five thousand dollars. And they actually posted about thirteen point mi, nine million dollars in tax payments for us this year. So, that's the tax rate summary. Do you have any questions on the tax rate summary? I mean, it's, it's really, you know, maybe it's just me, but I, you know, it's a lot of interesting information in, in it. Uh, you get to see all the taxing districts out there, their tax rates, their values. Uh, it's pretty exciting stuff. I'm, the, the crowd is just enthralled. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is really good information, and you and I have talked in the past with, uh, the forty-seven taxing districts that we have. Josephine County has seventeen. I think Coos County has less than twenty. I used to know that number, but I'm not sure. Point is, is we go into our strategic plan, and we try and look into the future. Your question is excellent on, does any money come back to the assessors? I know that that failed in the legislature last year for, what, two percent, if I remember your report, and I read a little bit on it.
There was a two percent bill a couple of years ago, not this last year, about a couple of years ago.
It was last session, the short session. I, I could have missed that. But anyway, the, the focus for the state is to understand the issue that the counties are dealing with, the work you do, the load you have, nothing comes back. Back to, uh, Director Schmelzer's question. My question for you is, do you see any way, over time, that these districts could be consolidated? And if so, how could, how could we structure our savings? Uh, I mean, I think we're going to be faced with that inevitably, um, sooner rather than later.
Consolidation is going to have to happen.
Yes.
In some, at some form, at some time.
It's none of our fault here that we have that many taxing districts, and I'm not saying one is any more critical or important than the other, but it's, I think we can learn from our neighbors, and I, and your work with Jackson County is excellent, and I think that's what's coming in the future, I hope. There's a lot of ways to save funds.
So, consolidate, consolidation of districts, I mean, for instance, if, if you wanted to consolidate all of the library districts, which we see here at the bottom, uh, we, we can see that, that the districts have tax rates anywhere from forty-two cents per thousand to as much as seventy-seven cents per thousand. They all have their own voter base.
Mm-hmm.
And they all have their own boards of directors. Uh, I don't know what the process would be for consolidating them. I'm not saying that it couldn't be done. Um, in, in fact, uh, years ago, I served on a sanitary district. It was called the Knoxville Sanitary District. And we actually went through a process where we annexed that small district into the Wedderburn Sanitary District. And the tax rates for both districts were about the same, so it worked out well, and, and the voters voted on it, and it worked. Um, so that sort of thing can work, but, you know, what tax rate do we settle on for all the people of the county? And, you know, for, does that mean the people in the Chaco Library District would have to pay fifty cents per thousand? Or they would all pay fifty cents per thousand, so?
I understand.
Some people's tax rate would come down, others might go up, so I'm, it, there's a hill to climb there. Um, but, could we save money by just having one director for all the library districts? Maybe so. I don't know.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
Actually, I looked into this when I first became a commissioner, and you look, I think of it as a big pie, where all the money goes to, and I think the pie is out of whack, if you really look into how the money is spent and what the districts give. And what happens is, a district is formed, and, and I'm not picking on the library district, but the, the Chaco Library District gives seven hundred eighty-six thousand. And when that district was formed, they probably needed that money because they were building the building. And so, now they have millions in their endowment fund, and it makes no sense for them to be collecting seven hundred eighty-six thousand, which is a little less than half of the entire county. So, what happens, I think, is special districts sometimes get out of whack, and that's one of the reasons I'm pretty adamantly opposed to forming more districts, so, just my two cents. And it's very difficult to change everything. You'd have to go to each separate district and get a bunch of the constituents of that district to get rid of that district.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and, and excellent point, Commissioner Gold, that, it, because the citizens of every one of those districts wanted to form that district to provide a certain service, and certainly, I didn't mean to pick on library districts either. It was just at the bottom of the page.
Yes.
Um,
I might.
So, John, how am I going to get over to my PowerPoint that I... Is that it, right there? Okay, so, um, I, I brought a PowerPoint that, Commissioner Boyce, you've possibly seen before, um, that illustrates some of the problems we're having because of low staffing levels in the, in the assessment and taxation departments. And I, I will tell you that, that it's my intention to come before the Budget Committee this year and ask for two and a half more employees, and ask for funding for a new assessment and tax, uh, software system. Um, I don't have the bids yet for what a software system might cost. Anytime you get a new software system, you also have to convert, so I mean, there's an initial startup cost that can be significant. Uh, but certainly before budget time comes around, I'll have those numbers. I did just want to let you know about it. If you want more information about that at any other time, let me know. I'm just not prepared with much more information right now. But, uh, this is a copy of, uh, a PowerPoint that I did before Legislative Committee a couple of years ago. And essentially, I was before the Legislative Committee telling them some of the difficulties some counties were having in assessment and taxation, and why there would be a benefit to funding the state helping provide funding for assessment and taxation. and/or the districts participate in funding for assessment and taxation. So really what the, what this is, is I already told you that we get out and we pick up a certain amount of money in new construction from permitted structures. And really, building permits are our chief discovery tool for finding changes that are taking place out there. If a person doesn't get a building permit, then our, our discovery tool is somebody telling us that their neighbor is doing something or, or doing a physical reappraisal and going door to door to every property in the county. And we have had some small effort of that taking place over the last six, seven, eight years. And so what we're finding out there. Oh, you're playing with it. I'm having a tough enough time as it is here, Charles. All right, thank you. What we're finding out there is, I mean, here's an example of, of a property where a person took, actually took out a building permit to build this structure. A garage with upstairs, whatever. And we actually got out and picked that up timely. I think it was early in the two thousands. And then recently, we went back and revisited this property and found that they had converted this to this and then added all this back here without the benefit of building permits. And so what we have is, we were able to go back the current year plus the five previous years and, and pick up an omitted property tax on, on this. And that omitted property tax equaled just over seven thousand dollars. Of that seven thousand, the schools get the biggest share of it at thirty-nine hundred. Other districts get about twenty-seven hundred. In the, in the county, of that effort, got four hundred and sixty-two dollars. And that again is the five years back taxes or six years back taxes. So you divide that by six and you can see how much is coming in annually. Of course, that's value on the roll, never goes away.
Right.
Unless it burns down or something. But that, those changes had, had taken place in the year two thousand. We found the change in two thousand sixteen. And so there were ten years or fourteen thousand dollars worth of taxes that we weren't able to go back on for the districts for those changes. Did you have a question, Commissioner Boyce?
No, I think you're doing great.
Here's another example of a single family dwelling that was built without the benefit of, of building permits. This is the omitted tax liability. And then again, that was built about two thousand, so there was eighty-six hundred dollars in foregone taxes that the taxing districts just lose. The other thing that we find happens is people can get a permit that they don't actually have to pay for, for an ag building. And so, you know, here's an example of an ag building that they might get that permit for. But what we're finding is they're building something like this with their ag permit. And again, you don't find this unless you're out there going door to door and finding these. So I, so I got to put boots on the ground out there.
I understand.
The omitted tax liability on this was six thousand and you can see where it goes to. So this is what we found in the years between two thousand twelve and two thousand sixteen. I don't have two thousand seventeen figures here. I guess this isn't as up to date as I would like it to be. But you heard me say that in two thousand eighteen, we had gotten about two point seven million dollars. So, you know, somewhere near the average. So I mean, we're averaging the two point seven million dollars a year just on a relatively small effort of, of going door to door on, on maybe a thousand to two thousand accounts. And finding this kind of additional value, yes.
I know we've spoken briefly about it. I mean, and this is going to take a lot of boots on the ground and I certainly appreciate your work on it. What I'm wondering is, I think I mentioned to you one time, I don't recall the answer, but doing a tax amnesty program where we offer people, you've got until July first to come in and, and let us know that you've done this to these buildings and we are going to go back and reassess from that time of change. But we're not going to, you know, give them a reason to come in and do that.
Not going to give them a what to come in and do that?
Well, you, I know we've got to give them a reason to want to come in and do that. And civil fines, you know, some kind of a, some kind of a reason why we're going to ask you to come in and
Get a permit.
Well, you're going to have permits, not only for building, but you're going to have to have electric permits, plumbing permits, if you put that kind of stuff in. But I think to offer some kind of an amnesty program that there's not civil penalties of some sort, liens put on the property until it's done, might get a lot of people in here to help you, save you having to put so many boots in the field. People, you might actually have people coming to you. Something to consider, that's.
And, and, and that could help. We'll still have to send people out there to do the appraisals on these properties. So at that time, we'd gotten about fourteen and a half million dollars at our average consolidated tax rate. That would have raised a hundred and twenty-eight thousand annually. So from this day forward. Of that, the schools are going to be getting about seventy-three thousand. Other districts, forty-six thousand. The county, about eighty-three hundred. If we projected that out based on, you know, the percentage of, of new construction we're finding, we're actually estimating that in throughout the rest of the county, we could find as much as a total for the county of eight hundred thousand dollars in taxes. That's on a value of, I guess the value is probably there, but we would find the, we would find eight hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes, of which the schools would get about four hundred and sixty-five-six thousand, other districts almost three hundred thousand. The county would be at about fifty-two thousand. And so so we have a couple of bills before the legislature that we're interested in. One of them has, has been raised by the Oregon Department of Revenue. And it would actually provide funding to all counties. But it would also provide some targeted funding to counties that are struggling like Curry County to help them correct situations like this. And ideally, what we'd like to do is, is take Curry County and we're working on a cycle of about an eighteen-year cycle. That is, we'd get around to each of the properties in the county once every eighteen years. And, and on those earlier slides, you could tell, I mean, we could forego as much as ten years in taxes in, in that amount of time. What we'd like to do is get that down to a six or seven-year cycle. And we figure we can get that accomplished with about one point five more FTEs and appraisal resource. We gave that information to the legislature. Well, let me finish this first bill. House Bill twenty-one oh four. The Department of Revenue has put that bill out. It will provide some funding for the Department of Revenue and all counties, but also some additional targeted funding for struggling counties. So we think that's, we'd like to see that pass.
You know any struggling counties?
Pardon?
You know any struggling counties?
We, we have an idea. But also there's another bill that our representative David Brock Smith put before the legislature that we actually had talked to legislature, wanted to last year and he had hoped to get it before the E-Board. It's House Bill twenty-three eighty-three and it's titled the Curry Pilot Project. I had worked with some other members of the Oregon State Association of County Assessors and Department of Revenue, AOC, that's the Association of Oregon Counties, the League of Oregon Cities, the Special Districts Association, members of the School Boards Association to talk about this issue statewide, but I was, Curry County was the poster child, so I was the assessor there speaking about it. And they thought they'd like to see us do a pilot project just in Curry County. And, and so House Bill twenty-three eighty-three would be a Curry Pilot Project to raise we calculated the cost of one point five more appraisal resource plus the equipment and things that we would need to go with it at, at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And so the pilot project would raise a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year from the state, picking up the schools portion, seventy-five thousand from the state and fifty thousand from our local districts. Curry County government itself would pay more because of this, because we're one of the local districts. And if we get that, then we should be able to bring Curry County into a cycle that's more like seven to eight years. We shouldn't have the issue after we go through that cycle of having multiple years of foregone taxes and, and we should be able to get all this value on the roll and keep it maintained. The example here is if the state is paying seventy-five thousand a year for schools and at the end of six years, they're, they're getting four hundred and fifty-six thousand back. Well, it more than pays for itself.
Absolutely.
If the districts are paying fifty thousand and at the, and we're getting about three hundred and forty back, that, that certainly pays for itself. So those are, those are bills that we're interested in and, and looking at going forward. We hope that the commissioners will be supporting those as well. That's what I've got.
So I have one question, Jim.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Gold.
How long would it take you to get the assessments up to date, up to six years? Would it take you one year, five years if you were to get that extra money?
If we get that mu, extra money, I, I am calcu, I'm calculating that at about six years.
So it would take six years or one year to get up to speed?
It would take. Essentially, we would be, we would change from working at a rate of an eighteen-year cycle to a seven-year cycle. So it's going to take us six to seven years to completely go through the county if we get one and a half more FTEs in appraisal resource.
Okay, thank you.
I'm wondering what the benefit would be if you were to get three new FTEs for, and two, and one and a half, one and a half of those are on a put on a part-time basis after, after you're pretty much caught up to speed. I was, if we, if we all of a sudden get the immediate influx of tax back into, into the county by hiring more people and then, and then, you know, making some changes once you're, once you're up to speed, cutting back again then.
If we are able to pass the Curry County Pilot Project, it's going to give us Curry County the extra money it needs to, to get this complete in a six to seven-year cycle. So if you wanted to add more people than that, then, you know, that would be extra money the county would be spending. You mentioned having some people on this part-time. In thirty-some odd years I've been doing this, I, I can tell you it's difficult to find somebody that can work for you part-time. Because it takes a long time to train a person to be able to do this work. My front office person, it, it takes us at least a year to train them before they really know what's going on with just the entry level position in the assessor's office. It'll take us two years to get an appraiser to where they really know all of the ins and outs and, and why they're doing what they're doing. Where having a part-time appraiser does work is if, and we've used them before. I've, I've had people, I've had appraisers retire and we've brought them back part-time. That's a great resource when we can do that. Because they know what they're doing, they can go out there and they can, and they can produce. And coming back and they come back and work for us at an hourly rate, it's less expensive than when they were on with us full-time because we don't have to pay all the benefits. So, but other than that, it's kind of difficult to have people working for, for, part-time for you because it's hard to get them trained. And then, I mean, volunteers, you have the same problem, but they want to set their own schedule and that doesn't always work.
All right, thanks.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Great job, Mr. Assessor. Right on.
I'll let you do the lead-in.
Thank you.
I hear him out there rattling the bushes.
Mr. Chair, it gives me a great privilege to introduce Merv George and his staff. Can you guys hear me out there, ladies and gentlemen? They're already talking about next fire season, Tim.
Merv George to the room, please, Merv George.
Can I also ask everybody maybe to move to your left a little bit? I think there's about eight or ten people out there might need a seat. Come right up. Sir, I'm going to embarrass you, but come right up to the microphone here. Yes, sir.
You want me to sing a song?
No. I haven't heard you sing yet. Did you bring me a new hat?
I have.
No.
I watched you on the sticks.
Okay.
Please come in all, thank you. Matt, hi, good to see you.
I've watched your videos.
Tom Hawkins, Cam Lynn.
I keep telling you, you've got two kids upstairs, man.
Wait. Well, I first met Mr. Chair, I first met Supervisor George. He wasn't, he was just coming on board then and we were really processing the Chaco Bar Fire. And he come with incredible credentials and intellect and integrity and certainly experience. And, you know, before the Rogue River Siskiyou became a combined national forest, you know, there's only four counties, now it's parts of six counties. And he has assured me that Curry County is his favorite, is.
He's trying to get me in trouble right out of the box.
You're going to let that go, right?
It's definitely one of my favorites.
And so my, my vision is because of his qualifications that we keep him here in indefinite period of time. And I don't mean to embarrass him, but he showed up about a month before the Klondike Fire and had some courageous moves. I remember right around the tenth of July, you sent me an email and you said, I'm worried about lightning. And you started looking for equipment and ways to prepare your staff, your, your fire teams. And I'm thinking, this guy's got it figured out. And of course, five days later, six days later, we had a hundred lightning strikes. And I saw your responses to that, also of your staffs. And it was so much different than the Chaco Bar Fire. And of course, the fires were different because we had so many issues related and yet so different in so many ways. I'm sure you probably saw my maps out here. That's, that's for the public to see, you know, the loss. And I'll just conclude as, as I proudly introduce him, Mr. Chair, that I am absolutely convinced that he is fully committed, no matter how long it takes, to building back our beautiful southwest Oregon, count me off this wilderness and the forests that, that have been greatly damaged. And I'm on board with you. Hopefully, hopefully I'll be able to help a lot. And I know you have a lot of citizens here, both sides of the political aisle, that are friends, have become friends and have an intense interest in, from various, and, and every time I heard you speak, you spoke to those folks. And it's, it's been very, very encouraging. Thanks for coming to Gold Beach today, sir.
Well, thank you for having me.
Mr. George, as you know, I've sat in a few meetings with court with you and we've gotten to know each other some. And I appreciate you, you and your team coming down here today. I personally don't think he's going to be here that long.
Don't say that.
Because of his talents, I think he's going to be moved up rather quickly to higher offices, but
We're setting you up for success and
Yeah. I admire you for what you do. I admire you for your bravery and the stand that you take not only here in Curry County, but in the other situations that I've read and heard that you've been in. I admire your love and your respect for your family. That says a lot about a man. So the floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you very much for the kind words. I certainly did not expect that today as I was coming in and it's always a pleasure to And it's always a pleasure to come into the Gold Beach and the Curry County area. In fact, we're doing a little tour. In fact, I'd like to introduce some of my staff here because I brought some leadership team members over from Medford. And yesterday, we spent the day in Powers, had a chance to go to Kuz Bay last night, um, spend a little time on, uh, some of the slot machines there at the casino. Worked our way down, you know, navigated the weather. But you know, interestingly enough, everywhere we went, we were getting really good weather, we were getting blessed. And as we speak, we've got some sunshine outside. So I don't know about you, but that melatonin feels pretty good. And, uh, we had a district meeting today here in Gold Beach. And, uh, you know, with me today, I have Eric Burke. Eric, please raise your hand so people can see you. He is the Natural Resources Staff Officer for the entire Rogue River Siskiyou National Forest. So he's in charge of natural resources. His name's Eric Burke, he's been on the job for a little less than a month. Next to him, I have Sarah Liddell. Sarah Liddell is my administrative officer. So she is like my attorney. She will keep me out of trouble and she's been doing a really good job being the handler for Eric and I on this trip. We got District Ranger Wade McMaster, who's your local district ranger here in the Gold Beach office.
Welcome to Gold Beach, Wade. Thank you.
So he's been on the job as well. So all three of them have been on the job just a little, around a month. And, uh, it's really rewarding for me to have these leadership positions filled with permanent people who are committed to the local communities. So that's a big, big plus for all of us. I also want to introduce, uh, Matt Timcheck, who is one of our natural resource timber guys here on the district. He's got local ties, he's very smart. I'm personally helping mentor him and hopefully grow him into a leadership position here in our agency, higher than what he's currently has a leadership position. So I got big hopes for Matt and I told him that in the parking lot not that long ago.
We do too.
So, uh, any of my other staff here, I just want to make sure I don't leave anybody out. But it's really important, um, that you all in the community as well as leadership get a chance to meet these folks. Because when we have situations like fires, uh, or when we're trying to plan projects that are keeping communities safe, these are going to be the people that are going to be the brains behind the projects. And it's really important that we, as an agency, do a better job of working with our communities, not only when there's a smoke column, but also in times like right now when we're trying to reduce our fuels. You know, that's something that is the highest priority for me because in my career, I've been blessed and also sort of cursed, if you will, to have seen so much catastrophic fire in my career. In the twenty years that I've been in natural resources management, I've seen the fires become more intense. Uh, in the last seven years alone, I've actually have hosted and hired over seventy-five incident management teams, most of them at the type-one and type-two level. The majority of my fire experience is in California where we're seeing year-round fire seasons and not just seasons anymore. But I've also, um, spent a billion dollars in the last seven years trying to put fires out. So if there's somebody who understands and recognizes the need to be doing more active management and trying to get the, the fuels that are, you know, causing us a lot of problems during fire season, to get those under control, I definitely have a first, first-row seat to seeing what that looks like. So I'm fully committed to making sure that what we try to do as an agency is in tune with the things that I've seen and heard from leadership in this, uh, community. You know, it's always going to be our highest priority to keep our people safe. And as taxpayers, you have a right to know what it is we're doing or not doing. And I'm always going to commit to transparency. You know, one thing you will see about me is I'm pretty consistent with my messaging and I'm always never going to shy away from an awkward conversation if there's one to be had. Because there's, the stakes are too high not to actually have some of those awkward conversations. So it's a pleasure to be here today. I don't know, I wa- I want to field questions. I mean, I can go on and on about things, but I know your time is valuable. And, uh, but I would like to offer ourselves, any one of us that are here today in our green uniforms, if anyone has any questions for us, I definitely would be open to those.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to introduce Mike Robinson at some point here. We have about, uh, forty-five minutes, so if you and your staff are comfortable with that, then, uh, yeah, and I, and I'll, and I'll certainly I'll lead off and, um, you know, the fires that, uh, the July fires that we've watched over the years, the five or six that we've had in the Callmeopsis and the total acres burned. I, I think it was Mike, it might have been you, Mike Robinson, I can't remember now. But coincidentally, maybe not coincidentally, all five of those major fires started within just a few square miles one another. The Granite, which of course became the Klondike, you know, the Chetco Bar, the Biscuit, uh, the Silver Fire in the late eighties. So those lightning fires are right in the middle of the wilderness. And correct me if I'm wrong, but if you can't get your people in to get them out within the first few days, we know what the consequences are.
So that's something that I've learned last year. And it's something that I'm learning from people like Mike Robinson, who have been here and are fighting fires in this area for a long time. And I want to say, Mike, thank you for all the help that you provided this past season as well. It's a pleasure to get to know you on a personal level, but it's even more of a pleasure to work with you professionally. This guy's one of the best in the business and I think you know that. And it's really important that, you know, we get to learn from people who have that local knowledge and so that we can use that when we're looking into the future. And I'll tell you that one of the reasons why we weren't able to catch that, you know, Callmeopsis lightning bust last year was because we had so much fire going around the communities that were near and closer to homes. So all of our aircraft and all of our personnel were just spread out. So you're, you're, you're right, Court, that before the lightning bust happened, we had some, uh, computer modeling that predicted we were going to have a lightning storm. So I asked our regional office for five hundred thousand dollars of severity funding and I brought in over a hundred and fifty firefighters for that weekend, just to be prepared for that lightning strike. Had we not had those severity resources, we could have been in a much worse situation. But having boots on the ground and people to be able to respond is always important. What I learned is that, um, I'm going to try to fight harder to get a priority upping when we have a fire in the back country, especially the Callmeopsis. Because we know that if we don't catch it, we know what's going to happen. Because there's just not a lot of good places to try to catch that fire once it's, you know, starting to do its thing. And so I am going to push a lot harder to be even more aggressive, if that's possible, with initial attack when we have a fire like that. And that means putting, you know, helicopters to use, that means putting boots on the ground. If I can get some smoke jumpers in there, try to get line around it. This year, we did have smoke jumpers that had a line around it. But as that fire was pushing their containment lines and we couldn't support them with aircraft because the aircraft were being used to protect homes, we had to get them out so that they didn't get killed. So unfortunately, you know, the, the fuel types, you know, and if you don't have roads to get there, if you can't get people there safely, it just makes it a lot tougher. And so, but I do know now how hard it is to fight a fire in a Callmeopsis and it's some of the most difficult terrain in the world.
Yes, Julie. Julie Schmelzer here.
Yeah, so Matt, I don't know if you want to talk about some current projects that we have going on in the district. I will just say globally, across the forest, right now, we have sixty million board feet of timber that's under contract. And we currently, um, are looking at a timber target of this year of about forty-three million board feet. Last year, we sold thirty-five million board feet across the forest, even with all the fire that we had. So reducing fuels by cutting timber, but reducing fuels by doing prescribed burning is something that's really important for us. But Matt, for a more of a district perspective, maybe you could share that.
Yeah, so actually, one of the maps is on the wall, Gary, and I think, I know you're familiar with that project, the Shasta Agnes. We're working through the planning process of that right now. And I think the, um, we haven't set a new timeline for it, but we're looking for a decision probably early next fall. And it's not a fuels objective project, but you can see that it builds a pretty decent wall along the eastern edge of Agnes and, and Ilhii and some of the communities there. In addition to that, there was a, a small CE that was signed, uh, several years ago. And we've actually gotten money flowing towards it for fuel reduction around, um, the private properties of Agnes. And, uh, so those are the main things that we're doing right now to kind of protect one of our more vulnerable communities. But we're, we were talking in a meeting today, what is the next step? Where are we going next for, and how we're going to get strategic to go where it's most important to go first for our fuels treatments? And we know that the, the scale is huge and we got a lot of fuels to treat, so.
You know, and on that note, what I was sharing with the staff, it's, it's, it's not up to us, it's just the agency of where we think we need to go. It's going to take close coordination and consultation with the county leadership, with the communities that we serve, so that we could figure out what's going to be the biggest bang for the buck. You know, we want to make sure that our projects are in tune with what the communities want and they're actually going to serve a valuable purpose. And so we're just not at a place anymore where we can simply try to do it all. You know, and that brings up some interesting conversations too, you know, because I've got no shortage of people that want our folks to be working on things. So it's really a priority system of, well, what do we want to be good at with the limited staff and money that we do have? And so that's always, that's a harder task than one would think, to prioritize what your workload is going to be.
Julie, you had a question?
I do have a question. At recent meetings, Commissioner Boyce in particular has presented, um, basically some ideas he has on how we can help with fight the fires. And one of the comments made in those meetings were, people are tired of hearing us talk about it and they want to see us take action. What is, what could the county be doing to assist in preventing some of these fires or helping take control of the fires sooner?
One of the things that I think was really beneficial this year, so this is my turn to give some kudos back to Court, was that when we had our fire teams come in from all over the country, Court was at every single one of our important meetings when an important meeting was needed to be had, especially when it was me giving direction to these teams. Because they come in and they work for me. As the agency administrator, an incident commander works for the agency administrator. And it's really, really important when I'm giving direction to these incident commanders who don't know the local area for the most part, don't know the relationships and don't know what the goals are. What is it the goals are? So for us, it was get the fire out as quickly, as safely as you can and definitely, you know, keep smoke considerations. You know, we want to try to keep that to a minimum because we know what that's going to do to, you know, the economics and tourism and everything else. But also hearing about safety, you know, because if you don't put people in or you don't put resources on a fire, what you're really doing is you're transferring the risk to the local communities. Because the one things that we have learned is that if you don't address these backcountry fires, they don't stay in the backcountry and they're going to come out at the most inconvenient time. But it was really helpful for me to have people like Court that were there at these daily meetings so that they could hear the changes in condition. Because it's a storyline, it's like changes by the minute. And if you're not there to be taking in all that reconnaissance and that information, it's hard to share with constituents who have some trust issues. I mean, I'll just say it point-blank that the Forest Service does have some trust issues with the communities that we serve and rightfully so in some cases. So that's why you see a deliberate effort by me to be as transparent. I mean, I've come over and I've had meetings in this building during fires this past summer so that I could meet with constituents and just give current updates or why I made certain decisions. Because, you know, when public safety is at risk, I don't think you can share enough information. And so that was a start by having Court learn all about the incident command system, learning about what it is I'm sharing with incident commanders, what are the maps, what are the boots on the ground saying? You know, we also had Mike, you know, with Kuz FPA sitting there with their staff. We had ODF with us, we also had, you know, BLM this year. I couldn't be more proud of the cooperative effort that we had putting, it didn't matter what our jersey color was. Everybody was trying to work together to keep people safe. So having county representation is a start because it's a very complicated process, this whole fire stuff. I mean, even our own Forest Service people are still learning, you know, the systems and how teams get ordered and what's, you know, how does decisions get made? So that's a start. Ultimately though, what I'm seeing in twenty years of doing this business is that we need more firefighters. We simply need more boots on the ground and more equipment. And to me, it doesn't matter what color their fire engine is, doesn't matter what color their jersey is, we just need more people. Yeah.
That the thinning does a little to no good. And are, do you have the capabilities of doing some small clear cuts to break up these fire, to make fire breaks? And also, we were told that they were going to have a new policy of not plugging these fire breaks back up. And we've seen several of these fire breaks that have been plugged back up. I'd like to know what, uh, what's going on there.
So I don't know that I completely agree with the notion that thinning is not helping at all with fires. Um, it, depending on the weather and depending on the wind, it's true. Doesn't matter what you've done to treat the lands, that fire's going to rip tear. You know, when you have a Chetco wind event or you had a Santa Ana winds with some heat and you got live fuel moisture levels that are really low, you're going to see fires go a long ways. But I don't think that that's the norm with all fires. And I do think that by doing some thinning and prescribed burning, it will certainly help with low-intensity fires. But it also helps our firefighters keep some strategic, you know, fire lines to be able to anchor from for their safety so that we can keep a fire footprint smaller. So that.
There's another thing too, that, uh, the thinning does nothing. I mean, the Forest Service is also mandated to regulate and make optimum habitat. And the thinning does nothing for habitat. I speak from experience because I've hunted in Curry County over sixty years. And where there's habitat, the, the thinned out forest, all it does is grow manzanita, salal brush. Doesn't really give enough life in their, for the critters. And you break that chain and right now, our, our forest, our national forest is dormant. You don't find, we drove probably seventy miles in, in, in snow, that been there three to four days, encountered a half dozen deer. We were not for deer, but we were just watching, looking for game now. There's just nothing out there. We can take our dogs, we can rode our dogs. Occasional fox, maybe occasional coyote, but there's no habitat. You don't have any food for the critters. But that needs to be considered, you know, when you're thinking about habitat. The thinning absolutely anything.
Right, so I'll agree with you that if you're only doing thinning, it's not going to help with your understory brush. When, after you do your mechanical first treatment, you need to follow it up with low-intensity prescribed burning to keep the forest floor clean. That is something that's been proven time and time and again. And that's what needs to happen in conjunction with that initial mechanical treatments. Otherwise, you're, you're correct. The understory is going to grow up with some manzanita and brush and it's just not going to be useful and it's going to provide ladder fuels to, to help future fires if you don't treat it. The other point that you had about fire lines and putting them to rest, well, we're required by our forest policy under our forest management plan to be making sure that we're mitigating erosion measures. So when we open up some fire lines and it goes down to bare earth, we, we have to put something on top of it. Now, it doesn't have to be a bunch of fuel. It could be as, as simple as putting some hay down or something else to try to prevent that erosion. So in certain areas where we've been using the same fire lines over and over again and we've seen some of those areas work, we did what was called repair lightly so that it'll be much easier to open those up in the future because we know we're probably going to use them again if we get fires in those areas. So we did take a look at that.
Yeah, question? Use the, use the mic, please. Use the mic, please. Tim, let's get you a mic.
Mr. George or maybe Matt, you described the need here as fuel reduction and I think probably almost everybody agrees with the need to do that. So how would you see the, uh, the kind of work that you envision here to do fuel reduction being different, say, from the traditional commercial timber sale?
Well, when you're looking at commercial timber sales and if your only goal is to make a profit, then you're going to view your, your project differently than if you're going to try to reduce some fuels, make some jobs, provide, you know, a thinner forest with less fuel to burn, but also to clean that understory, what we just talked about. Because when you clean the understory, what you're doing is you're preventing ladder fuels from growing that are then going to allow to have crown fires later. And I think that is something that's really, really important. But it sounds easier than it is because it's hard to pay for all that service work. Most of the time, industry only wants the commercial trees. They don't care much for doing the burning and the piling and all of the rest of that goes with it that you really need to do if you're really going to treat the forest. So that's where we come in, try to figure out, you know, how to use other creative ways to, you know, pay for that service work to happen. And so here's, here's a plus. One thing that I've learned about the Rogue River Siskiyou National Forest is we have some of the most valuable timber in the country. And when we have a green timber sale, we always have a healthy competition from purchasers. Now, when you have a minimum appraised value that you've set in order to sell something, when we offer a green sale here, especially on the coast, we always get purchasers that buy this, this, these sales at higher than the minimum appraised value. buy this, this, these sales at higher than the minimum appraised value, which then allows us to have some what's called KV dollars. Knudsen Van den Berg, it's a, it's a technical term for when you have profits, you can then use that to go do some of that service work. You can also use that money to help improve the roads. You can also use it for reforestation, and that's really what the main purpose of it was. So, we're looking, we're doing some homework internally to try to figure out how we can better pay and, and utilize the resources that we currently have from some of the profits of our timber sales so that we can do some of that work that I just talked about. I don't know, Matt, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Since I have the microphone, I'm Ann, and I'll follow up. I want to follow up on your question zip, which is the question about thinning in our area. I've read a lot about it. I've read about it over, you know, in the Rogue Valley and in the Sierra, all these pine forests where it seems to totally make sense. But over here, we've got these trees that come back right after fire, like tan oak and madrone and myrtle wood. There are all these really great, beautiful trees, but, um, so if you thin and then burn, and then you kind of have to do it again right away because as soon as you do that, they're going to come back again. And so, it's just such a different type of forest that we have here, and I'm just really curious to know what you think about that or how, it's just so, it's not like the cookie cutter solutions or solutions we hear about everywhere else will work in our place, so.
Right. You're spot on, and you definitely need to do return intervals to do the maintenance. So, the good news is, is that I've spent the last eight years on the Six Rivers National Forest directly to the south of us. That's in the same veg type that we're in right here. So, I've got eight years of direct experience doing projects to see what works, what doesn't work, to tweak our, our future projects so that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck. So, you're true, your point about return intervals, you need to do that, that follow-up low intensity burning probably on a five to seven-year interval to keep that understory clean. It's not a one and done kind of a deal. And so, the problem is, is running out of capacity of people to do the maintenance but yet to do future new sales. You know, I've only got enough NEPA capacity, so to do the environmental analysis, I have two teams for 2 million acres. And so, it's really, really important when people ask me, oh, hey, you know, we want to redo our cabin and we're a rec resident. I have to use that same team that would be doing a timber sale or a fuels reduction project to go help an individual so that they can remodel their cabin because they spend big money with their cabin every year for us. Or if I want to go repair a road and fix a culvert, if I don't have the environmental analysis done, I've got to use that one NEPA team, I have two, but one, it would be on the west zone, to work on that culvert. So, what I'm saying is I have to be very strategic about what I want our team to be working on, because I can't do it all. And so, you've seen in the media lately how we're trying to utilize our partners. You've heard some rhetoric about the Good Neighbor Authority. And I know that there's energy in the room probably because when we sold a Good Neighbor Authority timber sale, first of all, it was salvaged, so there wasn't a whole lot of profit in it in the first place. But under the Good Neighbor Authority, there is not the requirement for the 25% that would then go to the state. But it is a way for us though-
Back to the county, so we're-
But the work that they did does have some money in it. That does benefit jobs, it does go back to some of the roadwork, so there is some benefits that come back. But there's definitely going to need to have additional capacity in the future, and what I'm hearing from the chief of the Forest Service is that shared stewardship is a big deal. It's a big deal for me, it's a big deal for my boss. So, working with counties, working with partners to do all this stuff that we're talking about to keep people safe, that's where we're trying to go in the future, because we don't have enough people to do it ourselves.
Okay, Court. Mr. George, we're, uh, we're still able to hold you over until 5 o'clock, and, uh, we're going to have a short, uh, meeting, but we have the downstairs where you met before, and, uh, Director Robinson, Mr. Robinson, if you wouldn't mind coming up, and I want to introduce you, but you're still, please stay there, because I think we're going to get some more-
Here's the deal, you got me all night.
Ah!
My team and I are staying the night here tonight, and so-
I think I owe you prime rib. Mike, come on up. I want to, I want to introduce Mike Robinson. He, uh, he's been with, uh, Coues, where's Derwin, by the way?
Oh, there he is.
Ah, there he is.
Boggs.
So, I continually give these to a bad time about Coues-Curry Forest Protective Association, but that has been falling on deaf ears. So, Mike, you have, uh, for two seasons now, you have put up with my emails, my phone calls, my questions, often my bad attitude, but you have, uh, you've, you've been there every day too. And to see the two of you work together, you and Supervisor George, and, you know, I wanted to get you in a helicopter, instead you got me in a helicopter, and, uh, much appreciated. And-
Did you get my bill on that?
Yeah, I've been waiting, and, and, we've got a lot of bills here, you know? But Mike, thanks very much for your dedication and your effort through Coues Forest Protective Association and the people that work with you, Derwin and, and Brent and, and goodness, all of them. I'm just proud to have them here in this community.
I appreciate, uh, it's good to come back down to Curry County. I grew up fighting fire here, literally, from 89, so, uh, thanks for those kind words. And, uh, uh, I would say a, a couple of things. I really appreciate Merv and, uh, his attitude and his, his frankness and his ability to work with us, and because for me, it's easier to work that way than get things done. And I think we got a lot of things done, and I think we have some momentum and we want to carry that forward. I would, I would comment on a few, uh, things that Merv is up to here, and, uh, which is a very big deal. Uh, he, he brings a, a group of people here to meet with you today, and that's, that's a big deal, because I've always, we can, we can have great passion and great understanding, and, and if we don't have the right horsepower with us, we'll never get things accomplished. So, I welcome your team, and, uh, Wade, especially for the coast, thank you much for being here, and, uh, we'll work together and get some things done. So, we got some horsepower here, and, uh, Merv is purposely doing that, and that's going to set him up and us up to get some things done. I want to go back to Julie's question about what the county can do. And, um, you've heard some stuff here about resilient landscape, fuel reduction, getting our forest back into shape. And, uh, part of the responsibility of all of us that live in these, these wonderful counties is we have to take responsibility on ourselves to accept the fact that we need fuel reduction. We are going to have to put fire on the ground, and we have to embrace that. We also need to take advantage of our shoulder seasons and make sure we get the right fire on the ground. I talked with Merv this fall, and we had some beautiful fall weather, and we were doing a little burning. We had a little excitement on Cape Relo Road, uh, that we all know about. But we were doing work that needs to be done to protect our communities. And I, I told Merv, I said, we need to have fire on all of our ridges right now. And that's, that's where we need to get. You heard Merv mention, uh, it can't just be a one-time entry, right? No, this is going to be an entry of fire into this community, in, into our ridges in the backcountry to keep fires in the backcountry when we have the lightning. Because as far as I know, we're, we're never going to get rid of lightning, right?
Oh, we're not.
Lightning's going to be with us. So, we have to figure out how to deal with that. So, we as a community, we have to embrace this. We have to get a mindset that, uh, we have to have fire in our communities at the right times. So, the county can help us with that mindset. And getting that education out there to everybody to take care of their properties, just, if you call 911, that doesn't necessarily mean that somebody's going to immediately show up and save the day for you, or me. I have to take accountability to take that kind of work on myself. So, I want to support Merv in his actions, and we need the counties and the people of these communities to support his actions and, and my actions as we move forward here. We have a lot of work to do. Private landowners, our land is in no better shape in some ways than, than the Forest Service's ground. We need active management. I don't care if it's clear cutting, I don't care if it's thinning, I want to see active management. I want to see roads open, I want to see water holes, I want to see trails maintained. I want to see boots on the ground that can get to the fires and to make good decisions about putting fires out. That's important to all of us. And then, uh, the last thing is about, um, just, I really appreciate Court's efforts here. Thank you much for your efforts, and, uh, we'll, we'll do good things as we move forward with the commission. I, I do appreciate coming down. We need to do this more often, and, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, help, help you guys be successful. So, thank you.
Either one of you could answer, if I may, Mr. Chair? Either one of you could answer this. Just discussion on roads, you know what my position has been on that, and, and, uh, I understand the, the financial aspect, the, the amount of money sometimes to maintain those roads, but I've heard you both say more than once that access in, not there, and then sometimes just getting the firefighters out, having that backup plan. So, boy, have I learned that and tried to communicate that and help the public likewise understand. But closing roads or not, uh, again, I know, back to the budget, not doing our best to keep those roads open and to access, uh, is a huge, huge issue for, uh, myself, uh, on a personal and, and public official level and the people I represent.
And I would say that Merv's efforts to bring a severity of resources over here on July 10th before the July 15th event, there are fires that were put out by those resources in conjunction with our crews that nobody even knows were there.
That's right.
Because we had access, the key was we had access and we had resources in place and we worked together to put fires out. We put fires out in California that California doesn't even know they had. And we, we did tell them eventually, but we put fires out down there. So, the access is the key for us, and having good people and good foresight and good leadership and horsepower on the ground to make it happen.
And sometimes that might be a good thing as well. Let people know, hey, you know what, we put out three fires today that could have been your next Chetco bar fire, but I had the foresight to see that. Let, you know, I think that's a lot, when there's a fire, everybody wants to point a finger sometimes, but sometimes, you know what, maybe we need to let the community know that you need to pat on the back for the foresight to see something going to happen, and getting those crews in there in advance. Letting the community know that, I think, is a good education process for the community as well.
Thank you, that's a-
If I may, very well said. Recapping or rewinding July 15th forward, and, and again, back to the comparison with the Chetco bar, we only had one other fire when we, when that fire was discovered compared to 2018, and 120 fires? I mean, just, if either one of you want to, I think the public to be reminded, even though it's only been eight or nine months ago, that was, it's just immeasurable, almost hard to comprehend, so.
You know, when I looked at the lightning strikes that hit the ground, because we were able to identify the positive strikes, and when we had people actually on them, you know, to suppress them, when I looked across at all those hundred-plus fires, I kept coming back to Klondike, because I knew that was going to be the one that was going to give us fits. Not only be because of the access issues, but because it was in the wilderness and it was not going to receive prioritization when we were trying to figure out where to put aircraft and people. So, that needs to change in the future, and I don't know how you do that unless you just get more people, more firefighters. And that's where I keep coming back to that, is we're going to start seeing longer fire seasons. We're already seeing that. One only needs to take across, peek across the border to see some of the catastrophe that's been happening in Northern California. And, you know, it, we need to be proactive, is what I'm trying to say, and that's why I'm so motivated. You know, there's, there's things that I want to do to help protect southwestern Oregon, and I'm going to be here for a while to make sure that that happens. That's my personal commitment to this job and to this community. And good thing for me, I'm surrounded by some rock stars to help make that happen. I want to go back to one point though, and that was this, 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 um, point about access. I am a pro-access forest supervisor who's going to be looking at maximizing my KV funding to help maintaining these roads, because one only needs to look at our highways right now to understand the importance of what it means to have safe passage for people.
You're talking about access, what, can, can Coues Forest, uh, can Coues Forest actually give you some support on, uh, access to these trails? Because right now, uh, as far as, uh, having trails that are open for motorized, we have three miles that are actually legal, three miles of trail. And a lot of those trails go into areas that would, would give you quick access to put out spot fires. And you're not going to want to walk in there, you want to get in there the quickest way you can, and if you can do it mobily, you know, with a, a motorcycle or a four-wheeler or whatever, uh, and it'd also add to, uh, recreation on the forest also. So, we're hoping that, and we know you, you guys work together and we appreciate it.
We've been talking about the access to the old legacy trails, really important for us, so.
It's, it's- I completely get that having access, especially for the motorized community, is something that's really important for this forest. I know that it's something that we have been talking about and how we can better serve that and make that happen. You know, Wade is all ears here, and this, you know, he is going to be the person who's going to be your point person for having those conversations. And I know there's a lot of committed people in this community that are willing to help us. I know that, because I see you sitting back there.
Yeah. Well, we have a group here that, that, uh, and for years, I've worked on it, but there's lots, lots of people that, a lot of these trails that we have wouldn't have the access right now if it wasn't for the private guys cutting them out. So, we appreciate all the help we can get.
Thank you. I want to ask a question of you, Mike, which is, um, the county, getting back to this question of what can the county do? Back, I think it was about 10 years ago, there was actually a county wildfire plan put together, and I think maybe your organization was part of it. Can you comment about how relevant that is? Could that be a useful starting point to look at priorities, or is it out of date? Or what can you say about how helpful that document would be to discuss?
Yeah, and thanks, that's a good question, and it, it's absolutely relevant today. It's been 10, over, probably 10 years since '08, I believe, when we put that together with the county. It, it's simply a message of, of fire awareness for your county, essentially. It's not regulatory, it's more of a education, here's what wildfire does, here's what you can do, and it's emphasizing of that, uh, education approach.
I remember it like puts, you know, like how many houses are at risk in Brookings, how many houses are at risk in Port Orford. So, it seems like there's a lot of good information there that-
There is. And I, I think there's some effort, I think Derwin's, uh, knows more of this than I, of trying to up that, uh, plan from '08 and make it more modern. Uh, you know, there's a lot of emphasis on, when we've had large fire seasons, when I say we, the Western United States, in, uh, 2000, Montana burned a lot of ground, and we ended up with what was called the National Fire Plan out of that. And, and the tendency is to throw money at problems, right? And, uh, money doesn't necessarily solve fire problems. Capacity, it helps with more people, but trying to get your communities involved and just throwing money at trying to get them, you know, uh, some sort of media campaign doesn't necessarily, is not all that effective. So, we have to, uh, teach people and educate why it's important for them to do things. Uh, the newest model is FireWise, uh, you know, so FireWise, we take our crews, we go into the communities, we clean around their homes because we want to do that to mitigate fire risks. In case we can't get to the fire, the fire will slow down when it gets to their home, that's the theory, and it works. The problem with that approach is every five years in this country, the brush, if you cut brush, it just makes it angry, right? It's going to grow back in this country if you don't spray it or maintain it. So, we don't get the people, the landowners, the neighborhoods to maintain that and self-police themselves, so then the brush problem comes back and you, you have the same problem five years later. So, FireWise is a good, good approach, yet we have to figure out how our communities will tag into that and ma- maintain those efforts. So, the, the fire plan is good, we should re-up that for the county, and then we need to educate and, 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 uh, and I'm not a regulator, even though I have that title, I have that authority. I don't like regulating. I'd rather have people understand, educate, and get them to work together to mitigate the problems.
All right. Another question over here? I'll get him a mic.
Yeah, you do.
You have to. We have to have it.
Sir, only because we have to have it.
He's always a rude guy.
You sure? How do you turn this off?
It's on.
Okay. Mike, you, you've already got a, a good footprint around Calma Opsis. It used to, 12, 15 years, we'd have a big fire and out it come. Well, it's a little more nowadays, it's every four or five years or every couple of years. You've already got the footprint from the Klondike and the Chetco, and it appears, and I know money is, is a big thing, but to start using that as a footprint and start working your way around with fuel reduction, and I'm saying fuel reduction is in the fall, you know, small intensity fire, back it down the hill, and you know that it's going to come out. It's not going to stop the spot fires, but it'll slow things down, give you a chance. And, you know, it's there, sitting there for you right now.
there for you right now. It's just, it's just my two bits worth.
Tom, would you introduce yourself? I think it's important if you would, please.
I'm Tom Hawkins. I guess I'm the chair of CCPLA, which we'll get with Merv and Wade and talk a little later.
You're Tim's brother?
Thank you.
You're Tim's brother then.
And also, if I may, in the back corner, we, we have Mike Miller who worked also for the Forest Service for at least 30 years, I think. And so I, he's being pretty quiet today, but he has a lot of respect in this community. Thanks, Mike.
And, and so, Tom, back to the, to your question about the community wildfire protection plans. Yeah, putting fire on the landscape, we need to do and we'll be fairly successful with that. But we also have our problems with that. It's not an exact science. So we have to have the communities buy into the fact that we're going to do this and help Merv and ourselves on the private side because it's not an exact science. You put fire on the ground, you can have a problem, right? So, so, but in the end, the overall effect is going to be 99% good. And with that 1% where we have to deal with something that gets away from us or whatever. But if we do our due diligence and do it right, it will work. We know that.
Well, I just want you both to know, everyone to know that this board will support you all we can. If there's anything that we can do for you or with you, we are here for you. Please do not hesitate to ask. I think Court's showing his wings on it and I am letting you know as well. And Ms. Gold can speak for herself. But anything this board can do for this county and for the state of Oregon, we are here for you.
Appreciate that. It means a lot to have the support from.
Director Robinson, do you want to talk just a little bit about the, the one that did get away? And, and there were some questions about that. And the county might want to do an ordinance or something. Of course, I was opposed to that because I, it was that rare time and that it got away. And I didn't, I, I watched you do your job and of course, I have 100% confidence in you and the people you work with.
Well, and, and it's not an exact science when we're putting fire on the ground. We know that. And we try to, we try to do it the best we can. We got a lot of tools in our toolbox and, and, but it's Curry County and we do have wind events down here and we know that. And so you have a wind event, you're going to deal with it. So we try to avoid those. That, on the Klondike fire, all the big fires, it's been wind-driven from the east. And that's just notorious for our county. So, so we, we, we've got to take a few lumps along the way, but we want to make sure we protect the communities also. So it's a, it's a balancing act. We don't want to over-regulate, but we want, and we want to be cautious, but we, we do need to clean the, the landscapes up. So, and that's not just the industrial landscape, that, or the forest landscape. That's the landscape in our communities also.
In the time I've spent with both of you and collectively, it's been needless to say, very educational. But something you didn't mention, and I've definitely heard you mention a lot in the past, is just the prevention aspect. And so, Merv, you, you mentioned ground fuels, the, you know, I mean, those three key words, managing ground fuels, the one-hour fuels, that ultimately the ladder fuels. And that is, if you could just, either one of you or both, speak to that again so the public understands what you're up against. You know, mentioning the deer, the loss of deer, I mean, they eat the fuel and that's part of nature. So we all, we all have that task to understand that and try and combat it and, and get back to that word prevention.
So one of the things that I'm bringing to this position is not only the modern science of the Forest Service, but I'm also bringing thousands of years of a tribal background to this, this position. And that's a traditional ecological knowledge that's becoming more recognizable, especially in the scientific community. In the Hoopa language, there's not even a word for large nuclear burn. And there's always been lightning. And one of the reasons because of that is because the tribes have always did return, you know, interval burning. Last person off the summit after doing their deer hunting would light Trinity Summit up and they would make sure that it would have a burn. And you would do it in the fall. It's because you knew the rains were coming and so that that fire wouldn't have time to come out of the back country and go burn up your community. But there for a while, this agency was really down on prescribed burning for a long time. And so we've changed a lot of our landscapes. And there's a lot of confusion in the publics about what is natural anymore and what isn't. And I will tell you that a lot of our landscapes, including our backcountry wilderness areas, are not natural. They haven't seen fire and they should be. And to get back to Tommy's question about, yeah, we could certainly be going out there right now and, and doing plans to do the Klondike, you know, maintenance burns. But in order to have my team work on that, that means they're not going to be working on the next timber sale. You know, it's an opportunity cost. If I have my team working on that, that means they're not going to be working on something else that may be providing 25% to the state. And so what do I want to be good at is always this question about what's the biggest need. And this is where regular communications, you know, this is, this is pivotal. And this is where we need the community's help. Because we think we know what's important to the community, but sometimes it may not even be close. And so I, I am a very transparent leader and I am hopeful that we can continue these kinds of dialogues on a regular basis so that when we do have smoke columns in the air, it's, it's not us trying to figure it all out. But back to that point about ladder fuels, if you do return fires that are low intense, you're not allowing the veg types to be able to crawl up those bigger trees. You know, when you have brush that's 10, 12 feet tall, when lightning hits that, that floor, it gets that ladder fuel on fire and then it gets the trees that then gets to the crowns. And when you have fires jumping from the crowns to the crowns, especially with some wind on it, that's where you start having some problems. Especially if the trees are all the same height, they're all the same age, they're all the same species. And we all know that the Forest Service has a lot of tree gardens out there that we've planted over the years. And a lot of them, if you don't maintain them and thin them and get the forest floor clean, they're ripe for the next big fire. So that's this active management that I talk about is we need to go out there and make sure we spend some effort on it to keep people safe.
Well, I'd like to thank you guys for coming. We're kind of up against the wall here for a time.
Did you hear any comments before? You said you were at 5 o'clock.
Okay. This has to do, this has to, okay, this has to do with thinning, fuel reduction and some of the work that's been done around Agnes. Because I saw some examples of it this year. And first, I'll introduce myself. I never did. My name is Gary Grotrian. I'm here today because I am a member of the Wild Rivers Forest, Wild Rivers Coast Forest Collaborative. And probably not a lot of people are familiar with it. Mike's a member also, Mike Miller. We've decided to focus on wildfire here for a little while. We're forming a, one little task force among our group. And our last meeting, we looked at that analysis that was done in 2008. We're planning a wildfire meeting in Agnes coming up. Have they gotten ahold of you guys yet? Our coordinator, our facilitator, has been trying to get ahold of someone to get you guys on board. We met with Wade at the last meeting, get them on board. So anyways, I know there's education involved. And so we're in the collaborative, we're talking about, you know, because we're going to have the meeting in Agnes and then venture out into the rest of the county and the area to have little meetings coming up, talking about the FireWise situation, personal homeowners' responsibilities to do their part. Now, getting back to Agnes fire this year, it was about four years ago or so, some fuel reduction was done on Oak Flat Road, around the one neighborhood at the very end of Oak Flat Road. That's where one of the spot fires occurred this year. It was just a combo hubbing 100 yards behind a friend of mine's house. And that's where that fuel reduction was done. And he felt a lot more secure where that fire was there because that fuel reduction had been done. It'd only been five years ago or four years. So it hadn't had a chance to regrow. And he had also done his own work around his own house and he felt prepared and comfortable because of that. And I want to put a plug in for that fuel reduction, thinning. The only thing on that project is they did pile burns instead of a prescribed burn. And they got another project going on in Agnes right now up around Foster Bar. They're doing the thinning. And it looks like they're going to do the same thing, which is pile burns instead of a prescribed burn. I don't know if Matt knows why, perhaps they only did the pile burns or not. But.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of the first entry. And the idea actually with Shasta-Agnes is we're building these large burn blocks. Yeah. So we're trying to build these areas and kind of think about how we're going to put more larger-scale fire on the landscape. So that's kind of the first entry. And it's an expensive first entry. But the idea is to kind of get it in shape so we can apply that fire and keep it low intensity.
Okay, I want to, one more. Because you're talking about the Shasta-Agnes project. So one other thing being done with that project is some metal restoration, which I think then brings back some of the habitat for the animals.
All right.
Mr. Boyce? Mr. Lee Riddle, would you stand up, please? Yeah.
Yeah. We noticed you back there.
Yeah. Thank, thanks for being here. This has been our go-to guy outside of the Forest Service and Coos Forest Protective Association. He and his wife Joan gave me a box of papers for safekeeping on the Biscuit Fire, just the Biscuit Fire. So I'm, I'm taking that responsibility pretty serious. I had a good friend, David Barnes, that read the every word 2008 fire plan. And he says, Court, have you read it? And I went, yeah, uh-huh. Anyway, it is very well done and we're working on that. Safekeeping. And you can keep collecting on the additional fires if you would. And thanks to Joan also. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Well, at this time, we're going to call recess to the meeting and we're going to take a 10-minute break. We'll come back for the, the 5 o'clock board meeting. We're journeying, yes.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
10 minutes, we'll be back.